If I can have everyone's attention, I'd like to call the work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. It is October the 29th at 4:00 PM. And I'd like to welcome everybody. I'd like to tell you that this is just a work session where we talk informally with each other. We're just, it's where we have a chance. It's not quite like a meeting. We do not have any public participation, but you know, everybody's welcome to sit here and listen to see what we're talking about and where it's going. So, we're glad you're all here. We're glad to see that there's lots of parents that are very concerned and love their community. And now, I'm gonna ask Ms. Crowe if everybody will rise and we'll have the invitation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we stand before you in a moment of silence for those of whatever manner of religion or belief that they have, please hear our words silently. We ask that everyone please have our fellow board member Nancy Roach and her husband in your prayers. He is very, very ill and this, which is why she is not here. Please remember her. Amen. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Second, a motion by Tom and a second by Kristen, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, and on that agenda is presentation and discussion items, redistricting. So, I think what we decided we're gonna do is we're gonna just start with our list and go down. And do you, did you wanna have?
I think it would be really good. We were gonna ask Dr. Sloan to talk about the, give us a little bit of background of why we're trying to reach a certain level in the middle schools and that kinda thing, so we can do that whenever. Would you like to talk to us about that?
Are you able?
We kinda hit you out of the blue.
She's sick.
You just give us a little more. That was something we, when we first did the first draft, we weren't aware of and came up with second. So, if you could kinda give us a little bit more background on that 750 threshold and why that is, actually, it's kinda higher, actually. That's the low end.
Yes, that is the low end. Well, when you open a middle school, you like to do certain things. You've gotta have so many teachers for connections. So, when you look at the number 750, you can have the right number, minimum number of connections classes that are needed. For us in our system, that is PE, health, chorus, art, band, a computer technology type course, various kinds, but one of those, and possibly drama. So, if you have at least seven of those teachers, then you can have normal full classes with 750. If we take our normal divisor, then we also need 25 teachers to have teams for math, and that would be a math teacher, English language arts teacher, science teacher, and social studies teacher. So, you'd have teams that you can do the team, the middle school concept. And also, you've got to have that fifth academic. For eighth graders, that's foreign language. For sixth and seventh, than most of our schools, that is maybe a literacy, a gifted. They call them all kinds of things, but it's an extra academic. For some children, it's remediation. For some children, it's enrichment. So, there are five courses for academics, and then in a seven period day, there are two connections classes. So, with our divisor and how we do that, we try to keep a fairly, as low as possible, teacher pupil ratio, but it, so, because you've got different levels of classes, for example, in math. So, you might not have as many kids in a math class, a high level math class that qualified for it, but you've gotta have a teacher for that. So, the less students you have in a school, the less options you have to offer those things. So, 750 is really the bottom, as you said. It's, it's sort of the bottom where you could do what you need to do for every level child. You get lower than that and you have to figure it out, which is very difficult to do, and some things you just can't offer. Now, if you go higher than that, then it doesn't cost the system anything else. If you wanna have the same program, about 750 can do it for every middle school in the county with nothing extra. If you go lower than that, you're gonna either have to decide not to provide something the students in other schools have, or you're going to have to have additional teachers in that school to bring them up to that base level. If you have about 850 students, then the principal will have some flexibility. Not only will they be able to provide the base that everybody has, but have some flexibility in what other kinds of things their community and their students might need. Does that help?
So, if you go under, is it gonna be hard to do the teams and like, would a teacher have to cross, like?
Yes.
The ideal is to have a team.
Yes, it is. And in middle school, an ideal team is four teachers at least, because that's one of every subject level. Sometimes, you know, students don't always end up in a, in nice neat numbers. So, sometimes you have teams of two. When you have a team of two, then you've gotta have teachers who are duly certified. So, it's harder to do, first of all, if you only have teams of two. And so, the less number of students, the less four person teams you can have. So, and if you get down to 650, or 600 even, then your teachers have to teach any and everything, and it's more like a junior high model than a middle school model, because you can't do teaming.
As a teacher, it would be a lot harder.
It would, because a teacher has multiple planning, multiple plans. In fact, if you have a small enough school and you aren't able to have the same number of teachers in it, then you're going to have to have teachers who, for example, in eighth grade, may have to teach every level of math in eighth grade, from the lowest level to the highest level. And in a, and they teach five periods a day, and so, that's possibly five preps, and it is very difficult. Most of our schools try to stay no more than two preps a day, and more than that, they usually struggle with. And so, five preps a day is almost impossible.
When we saw what it did to Central being under the normal number, the 1,300 to 1,300 kids that they had, they were not able to offer the other classes that the other high schools were. And unfortunately, that was not fair to those students. So, I think that, that understanding that, having that information, helped me to be, understand better that we have to move somebody. We absolutely cannot leave it to where, we cannot move anybody to fill the school.
As a middle school principal, I know that parents also worry about sixth graders being on the same hall as eighth graders. It's that same process of a ninth grader being in the same class with a senior. You just worry about your babies. And so, if you, the less, the less children, the less number of teachers, the more probable and possible it is that you'll have some students on various halls, and, and your parents will worry about that.
Right, right, okay.
You talked about the core classes, math, ELA, science, social studies, and then you also talked about the foreign language and the gifted.
Yes.
One of the upsides we have in Forsyth County is starting that foreign language, which if anything, we would like to start it even at the elementary level. But we tend to, in Forsyth, but particularly South Forsyth, tend to have a lot more of the gifted needs in our schools. So, that's important to us to have that advanced math.
You'd have an advanced class, you might have a writing class, advanced composition. What your principal on that level will do is figure out what good strengths and talents that your kids have, and they'll offer classes with that. But if you don't have the teacher, you can't offer those extra things.
Okay.
Right.
All right, that's a little, that, that helps a little bit understand that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody else got any more questions?
No.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay, you wanna start?
Okay. I, I think we've all studied the maps and gone over everything, and I know we have asked the staff numerous questions about numbers and things like what the makeup with middle school would be, and how important it was to make sure that we did move enough students to make DeSana a, a, a middle school on the level of the other middle schools in our county. So, maybe the easiest thing to do, we, I've read through everything that was turned in and read through the emails, and I think we all have done that, is to start with the elementary school map and try to address the issues that were brought up and see if there's any changes that we need to be made. I feel very strange doing this, 'cause Nancy's not here and this is what she does, but, but we'll try to work through this.
Well, it's done in the order that they spoke.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you wrote that down, that'd be super fun.
We have, if you kinda go through the order they spoke for the elementary, or we can kinda look at the map and work west, east. Anybody? Tom, it's kinda your neck of the area, do you wanna?
So, I'm at Brian's drive. That's what we usually do it. We have to look up on the map, on the screen, or we can just start there, I mean, the line.
Do you wanna start with the campground area? Okay. Calamar was the first one that spoke that.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Let's read through notes. Had 66 homes. We're switching from Vicry to Midway. Been very involved from the opening of Vicry was their concern. Sub area on the cut there with Sheffield, the upper end of the west side of campground.
It's all here in, someone spoke also from Lively Road and Will's Orchard, all that area, people were speaking, I believe, about staying and not leaving Vicry. But there again, we go back to, we have to fill Brandywine, and Vicry is way overcrowded. And I think that's the biggest concern, is trying to balance out the schools as best we can, so that some are not overcrowded as, as others. And one of the biggest schools that has a problem is Vicry, when they've got lunches from 10 until 1:30 in the afternoon. And that's kinda been the epicenter of all of the redistricting. Out of Vicry has come numerous schools, but it still gets hit hard, and it's the oldest building and can't handle it. So, that, that to me is, this whole area, you can't move one without the other. So, I don't think that we can reverse what was proposed by the staff, just to leave it as moving on to Brandywine. Does anybody else have any other things?
Sub area 264.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like they've been since the beginning, since oh five at Vicry, both elementary and middle.
So, it's their first move.
This is their first move in 10 years.
One of the challenges we hear is lots of divisions that have a small number, or streets like Lively, and that is, is a valid concern. The, the struggle with that is, I think that comes down to transportation. I think I saw Mr. Pepp's here. If we left, for example, Lively but not Calamar, then the buses would literally pick up kids, drive down the street, pass subdivision, drive down the street, pick another. So, you really can't have broken up travel patterns.
Yeah.
So, that would be, so that would be the case for Calamar, Lively, Will's Orchard.
Right, all of those.
Tommy, you have anything on those? It's kinda your.
None of those either.
Okay.
It's the same thing. I think I was looking last night at the maps and how they redrew it. And I guess I'm trying to understand, yeah, so six, 265, it's like 266 might've been moved. Let's see.
You talked about Purdue and Chase? I don't think we've heard anything from them.
264, 265, 266. And as the study areas go up, they get closer to Highway nine.
How many houses? 66 houses?
And which one, Calamar?
Mm-hmm.
They had 66 homes.
Yeah, and it says only 20 elementary students and eight middle school.
I had five.
So, that's not many, but you know, if you take all of these.
That's right.
10 here, 10 here, 10 there, and then we have 100 before you know it.
You can't do one without doing all of it. And that's the problem, when you've got a whole area like that.
Well, that was one of the areas, that western area where we actually looked to pull in more. Cal, the campground area, the area over with Bethelview Downs and other three subdivisions. So, we were actually looking to go the other direction, not cut back.
Right.
It's tough. That area is so close to Vicry, so close to Midway. Anything else, Tom?
Nope. They're good there.
All right. Next one that spoke, or do we wanna see if there's anything else? We have, it's Post Preserve. So, there's much, I don't know if you feel there farther to DeSana.
Sub area 268.
Post Preserve is that small subdivision that's right there at Vicry Elementary and Vicry.
55 homes, 31 elementary schools, seven middle schools, .9 miles from Vicry.
I don't think you could put a subdivision more halfway between two schools if you tried there.
Right.
They're literally halfway between Midway and Vicry. Opening on, opening on to Post.
Kristen, what is that? Are the schools here, is there gonna be any more development up there?
There is more coming, but I think it went right here to senior. There's a lot more coming up this way.
Okay.
Actually, in the hole, yeah, more up this way, more.
But not here, right by the school, so to speak.
Well, this is commercial in here.
Mm-hmm. And then that, then that.
When Dickerson comes out.
The Belmont Downs and then the Post Reserve.
Yeah. I honestly don't think that one's spot there. But some, there is a senior line in there somewhere.
Okay, so it won't affect the schools.
I don't wanna swear by that one.
Okay.
Tom would know that street better. I can bring it up.
You had to consider it, you have to go all the way up to 271, 270, and 269. It's like 278 is the edge.
Oakmont was another one. I don't know if they spoke right after them.
But Oakmont comes out on Highway nine.
They come right out there, across the street.
Right.
Well, they were staying, they're staying Midway but going to, to, um.
Dent, uh, DeSana.
DeSana.
And they wanna go back to Vicry. Yeah, that was middle school.
Yeah. Well, we might as well just hit them while we're here, though. It's kinda a.
Yeah.
Let's see if we got them in here.
I think that's a situation where we have to, they have to stay at DeSana because of the numbers. And they're closer to DeSana, I mean, they're a little bit further than they are from Vicry. But there again, Vicry is gonna be packed.
We don't have any relief coming.
No.
Do we have anything imminent for Vicry?
Uh-uh.
At the end of, do you have any accounts for Vicry at the middle, at the end of draft two?
Yeah.
What we're looking at?
Percentages for Vicry? Elementary or middle?
Well, just capacity. You have, well, it's percentage of capacity or numbers.
Okay, well, Post, they were, their capacity's 1025. Let's see their grand total. They're expected to be at 1130, so still over at 110% capacity with these changes. So, they don't have space. Uh-uh, they really don't.
Is that before or after the additions?
This is, my understanding is, this is with draft two or version two, right? The, this chart is poked.
It's projected for next year.
Projected, okay.
Okay.
So, we do have land up in northwest Forsyth for elementary, but we do not have any funding for building in the current bond, so there's no plans at this point to build those future.
To relieve Vicry.
I don't know what the time's grounds, but there's nothing, year, years and years out.
Mm-hmm. This was.
So, it won't be one of those situations where we're building again right there in two years and redo it?
I mean, uh, no.
Yeah.
The only one I was, even had thought about was the Post Reserve leaving it at Vicry Elementary School, but I don't know, number wise, is that the same, same to do that or not?
Like 32 in that area.
How many is it, 32?
32 middle or total students?
Elementary.
32 elementary. It would stay in Vicry.
I just don't remember her saying it, that there weren't that many in the neighborhood, but maybe there are.
268.
When she spoke.
They've been there since it opened, too, it looks like.
But if it's gonna be overcrowded, I don't see how we can do that.
Just like Highway nine was the south end of that zone.
Well, and Vicry, if we, they, they need to be going down into DeSana.
Right.
And Vicry is 100% feeder, so if we tried to just change them, they would be the only.
You're right.
Right now, Vicry, Vicry's 100%.
So, that would mess up the feed.
It would be 30 some odd kids only. That's.
We'll go to DeSana, that's right. We can't do that.
Yeah, alone would screw it up.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, let's just leave it at that.
If we're missing anything, obviously, God, if it takes us that long to come to that revelation, feel free to throw that out at us, please, as we should.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is probably not riveting, and we don't have a coffee machine that I know of out there, so, sorry, but it's a step-by-step process.
All right.
All right, next one. This post I had was Maristone. Do you have more others in that area, Tom? Uh, next one I had was Maristone. It was talked.
Yeah, the one I had was Hampton Forest.
Oh, that's hard, yes.
It's both elementary and middle. It's been on the edge, and they have been switched multiple times.
That is a hard one.
So, I wanted to look at it.
They, let's see, 89 homes, currently Vicry, Vicry, 20 years. They've, they say they have 12 elementary. I don't know what's projected for next year.
Let's see what's set on here. 2, 278 B and C.
They were moved when we moved the, made the Midway move.
Yeah.
Then, before that, they were Midway.
They have like 15 and 15.
So, they were temporarily taken out of Midway to put in Vicry to get, when we did that emergency of Midway.
Right.
And I think that's what's so hard, because we were in that situation where we had to move those kids out of Midway, 'cause it was just dangerous, and there was nowhere to put them.
That was the April, the April redistricting, we did kind of the.
Right. And that's what's been hard for everybody, but.
So, I showed, I had 15, elementary 15, metal.
Hampton Forest, tell me where they are.
From Castleberry.
Right above, what's the name of that, the Rostone?
Yeah, over by the barn.
Yeah, Cross Street from the barn.
Oh, I got it.
It's up Castleberry off Cross.
Across from Providence Plantation.
Yeah. And they kinda went with the Midway zone, just back out and scooped around them. For that, though, I looked at, looked like the study areas for 278A. Or no, 240 and 277, I believe it was. They're across Castleberry, around the back end of the church. They're not developed currently, but I know they've had discussions on those plans.
Well, the one across.
And I would, they're not, they're districted still for Vicry, too, for a projection, but I'd rather take and move them back to Midway, 'cause we have time to do that before they're developed. Do it beforehand.
Well, Providence Plantation is always, the one across the street, and that was one of the things that they brought up. Why did they get to stay at Vicry? They've always been Vicry and Vicry, but Hampton was not early on.
Where's the edge on west for that?
So, it's Hampton and Central?
Hmm.
High school is Hampton.
Hampton's in west.
They're in west on the edge there?
Yeah. It's not in central, it's west. Central goes to Bethelview, and that's it.
Yeah, it is. So, they're on the edge of west central?
Right.
What do we think they're in? Boy, they could go in any three, couldn't they?
But you need.
Yeah.
I don't think they'll go to central, but they, they're probably gonna go to Denmark. Are we thinking?
They are right on top spot. Well, and of course, their next is Traditions. Traditions has to go down.
Yeah.
Just given the sheer volume.
Right, all of that's gonna have to go south.
Where is Traditions in?
It's in that triangle of.
No, I see where it is, but I mean, in their.
You know where Anderson's farm is?
In their development.
Oh, they're out of the ground fast.
But nobody lives there.
Oh, yeah.
People do live there, so it's that far.
Yeah, there's pictures in, one of the groups in here. There is sub, I mean, if I was just to guess how many are out of the ground, and this is pure gas, I would say at least 50, if not more. I mean, a lot of them on the ground, under construction, but a lot already living in them. They're very, very fast development. As well as the other side that opens up at the intersection of Majors and Castleberry, the other side, right, literally next to the barn.
277.
Yeah.
And that's where I think we probably need to split it, because there's a street, and I wasn't even aware of this. I'm gonna have to go back and drive it.
And there's a new one.
Yeah, it's right here. So, like, this is Hampton. This is the division you're talking about, that area.
Between that and Ashford?
And it needs to be split. 240 here, this area, and this area, 274. Send all of those, those are currently to Vicry. And I was saying, take those that'll be developed out, move them back to Midway, leave this here at Vicry. It'll make the map look funny, but it makes more sense.
Who are you talking about? What subdivision are you talking about?
There's not one there yet. It's a study area.
Okay, on the other side of?
It's across from Hampton Forest.
Okay.
And then going down Majors.
Which one, Tom?
Providence Plantations across from Hampton Forest, isn't it?
So, like.
So, here's where the.
Yeah, this is one, this, this whole study area is, it comes way up here to these.
Right.
And they're building down through here and probably over here.
So, he's talking about right in here?
I was saying, make those go to Midway.
Yeah, I think it.
If that was here, it'll make the map look funny, but it's like, the map comes just right out here.
You know what? We're getting, we're getting deep in this. Do we wanna suggest that they just look at this little, I mean, I mean, we're, 'cause I know that you were trying to leave some space in Midway, and I don't really know if you had specific areas in mind, you were kinda leaving some space for, so, do you remember? Well, we, you think it might be, we're kinda getting deep into this one. Have you really looked closely at that, the Hampton Forest?
277, 278, 248. 'Cause 248 includes a part that comes way out up the street, so, I think 248 and 277 probably need to be split.
Can you just tell me the study areas that we'll make a note for, again?
Yeah, 248.
248 or 248?
240 Abel and 277. And kinda swap those two for 278C, Charlie.
Let's go back and do it again.
Swap those two for 278C?
Yeah.
Is that what you said? Okay.
278C is Hampton?
Yeah.
So, you're gonna swap it and do what?
Swap those two, so the two, if we split those study areas, some of it's under development. Move those to Midway now. Swap those two, so the two, if we split those study areas, some of it's under development, move those to midway now. And then just leave the two seventy-eight along Hampton. That's what I'm thinking.
I just found in my notes, there's twenty houses in Traditions right now, how many houses?
Yeah, that makes sense.
But what is that gonna do to Vicry? If we, if we let, is that what you're saying, let them stay at Vicry?
Yeah, the, the, what was it, fifteen kids.
For Hampton?
Okay, and what is that gonna do to De Santa as far as losing numbers?
Well, it'll increase with that community that's popping up out of the ground right now. 'Cause you have a whole corner there, and I'm not sure of those projections. I wanna see what those growth projections are for those study areas.
But we're, we're looking at eight hundred seven.
Which ones?
Two seventy-seven.
Charlie, is that number the eight hundred seven that we are anticipating possibly being in De Santa, eight hundred whatever? That's not taken into consideration, the eighth graders that might stay, right? It is, does not take into consideration. So, the lower we go, the more chance we have of not getting that seven hundred fifty now.
So, if we stayed exactly like we were, we probably are gonna be close to seven fifty anyway. Because a lot of kids stay.
That's right.
I don't know what the percentage, you don't happen to know that, do you?
It's pretty high.
Like, in a, in a past redistrict, and how many, you know? I shouldn't even ask you that, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, we've been asking.
The last redistrict in the middle school, the percentage of middle school students who stayed was a little over seventy percent. Of eighth graders.
Of eighth graders.
Of eighth graders.
And keep in mind, if the eighth grader does, then their fellow sibling can at one year. Um, for the two seventy-seven, for next year's projection, um, we have, let me just highlight it here so I can read it. We're looking at eleven point six, fourteen point eight, and ten point five. So, we'll round them off, twelve, fifteen, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-seven-ish?
Yeah.
I just think we're, we're playing with this, Tom, and splitting that and.
Yeah, what I was trying to do was find those areas that are popping right now in that corner, 'cause that's where the development is right now, all along Castleberry toward nine, and make sure to move them to midway. Where they're not there yet.
But that's, that's what these numbers are about.
And just swapping numbers, is all we're doing there.
That's not, the ones I did were not actuals, those are the projections, those are the, with the roll-up, if that says it better.
But, but it affects the middle school, too, that's my point. So, you start, even though you've got them going to midway and to Santa, they're gonna go anyway. But what you're doing is taking numbers out of Hampton that we need to make sure that are in.
Well, I'm taking them from these other study areas that I'm looking at.
But they would be part of it in the future anyway.
I don't know how much future there is, that's what I wanna find out. 'Cause I'm, I've heard the other, in that one corner across the street, it doesn't seem to be a subdivision yet on the map.
Why don't we skip past this one, I'm going for now, I can look at it.
I'll come back and do some discovery in that area.
Too.
Yeah. All right, well, if, if staff could kind of just look at that a little bit closer and give us their best thoughts. Okay. All right. Next one. I think the next one would be possibly Maristone. Yeah.
I'm guessing they're right there on the line. And they'll be going back to midway, right? I think that's where they're at.
Yes, I keep getting my mind stuck in middle state elementary.
What study area are they?
It's, um, they are three oh nine C.
You can see, okay, they're along shallow.
So, they're kind of shallow, so they are going midway. Shallow midway. One hundred tons, they're a, relative, in our world, they're relatively older subdivision, two thousand and six. Thirty-five to midway, seventeen to De Santa, after.
That was last.
That was last time, after added districts. That's pretty close, that's a hard one. They would likely be, and we're just guessing, likely be in the new high schools as well, I would think, given their location.
Looks like they were in midway and Vicry Middle and open, shallow, and piney.
Wow, so they've been on the edge a few times.
Yeah.
How, how many miles do you think this is from midway?
Uh, check their stuff, they haven't told us. Here we go. Just gonna put this in off the pedal. Three point two miles. Three point two, and they, according to theirs, they're two point six from shallow?
Two point four.
Right, I'm just reading, must be a different person's stuff from that. Yeah, inside it says two point six, on the top it says two point four.
I was looking at the back page.
Call it two and a half. Tom, thoughts on that one?
No, it's in between, and while it is on the edge, there's a number of areas right around it, too. So, you almost have to take into consideration that whole area. There is a, a large area just off highway nine in shallow that's undeveloped, that's still gonna grow, too, but this is a part of that whole leg, I think, that's moved.
Like the Glen is a newer one.
Right.
And I tried to look at those areas and consider the most recent move.
But we can't take Glen and drive, same thing as what's happened with Lively, you can't take Glen and drive past Maristone and not take them.
Right.
I think, uh, Mr. Potts would.
But am I reading this correctly, that they say it will take seventy minutes to get to school every morning?
No.
Are you on the green one, in this one? Was that round trip?
That couldn't be seventy minutes.
I mean, I've, I've read about it. Sixty-eight minutes total drive time to and from midway.
From Maristone?
That's total.
I will, to their credit, say that, I, I think we, as we all know, highway nine is, is pretty brutal. I mean, that is, that is true. But I don't know the exact time, but that is a hard one.
And also in here is talking about the west and east of four hundred, but we really don't, I mean, we don't take that into consideration. Just so everybody knows, that's not a boundary hard.
No.
I mean, in other areas of the county, we cross, four hundred is safe to cross now, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, central, part of central, it is on the other side, part of north it is, too. North crosses over.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate, they have been here since for a while, but highway nine's not a great way, but they, with the widening of, of Union on that far end, not all the way across, we've learned that, but they can go down, if they get through there, up Mullinax, which is currently being widened, or Fowler is an, is an alternative, um, travel route. That is gonna be a busy area.
But so is everywhere else, down south into the county.
Yeah.
I think they, they're gonna have to stay with it.
Any more thoughts on that one, Tom?
No.
All right.
And it's a fairly large impact, too, from what I remember, with like seventy-seven elementary level alone. So, it's a young subdivision, I guess.
You wanna move on to the next one, or is, is everybody pretty much on the same page on that?
Dolly, you ready to move on?
Yeah. I, I might would like to have a, just to know if we could maybe have just a bus run before next week. You think we could do that? I don't want them to be on the bus an hour and ten minutes, I'd like to just know.
Let's know if you could do a bus.
Or, or if, if Gary can just check on it with his, just get with transportation about that from Maristone. You don't have to get up.
Yeah, I, I didn't understand what you're saying.
Uh, just from Maristone, the, the transportation times, how he thinks he would go and want his best. Okay, thank you.
To midway?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's a good idea. And, and in doing that, it would, I would think, have to look at the other, look at the Glen, and I'm sure he'll figure that out.
Well, yeah, that's all right there.
How to figure out how that works.
Okay.
All right, I know we have Wallace Run in that crowd.
That's the next one, isn't it? I have them in elementary, I believe, I got the right section here.
Wallace Run, is that what we?
Yeah.
That's right, south of that one.
You know, instead, study area.
South Union Hill.
So, they have been midway, they went to, they've already, they've been shifted at least one time, midway to Shiloh, now to Brandy. To Shiloh, it looks like they might be, so sixty-seven families, thirty-ish kids.
There, can that was that emergency change that we had to make for midway?
Yeah.
We moved them out of midway, they wanted to move out of midway, that's right.
Well, we had to move them for that whole shift we did to get the students out of midway. So, they're, they're caught like so many of the kids with that, that extra move.
Distance-wise, they have to be closer to, well, actually, Brandywine's over there, so I accept that.
Right, it's right there. I mean, all those subdivisions are closer to Brandywine and Shiloh.
That's Tom.
Yeah, I'm trying to get there, it looks like they basically were in midway in oh five, moved Vicry, and then they opened Vicry and were moved to Pine Grove in oh seven.
They opened Vicry?
They were in Vicry in oh five.
Vicry Middle?
Yeah. And then went to Pine Grove.
Okay. So, what do you think?
Just to go back where you're looking, the other ones around that Hampton are still all able, and so they have not yet been zoned over. They're still farmland.
That's it, right, corner of Majors Road.
Yeah, same, so the green is all, so it's, so it's not imminent, I guess, is a good way to.
Yeah.
At least not surrounding Hampton here, I mean, that four corners.
That Hampton Forest?
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of, still a lot of agriculture yet, not, I mean, quite possibly will go residential, but it's not as imminent as some of the ones in south, southwest quadrant.
Right.
Okay.
That one, that's close to the, it's on the edge of the county.
Right, it's right.
Highway nine, it's right by, yeah.
And you, you know it's very close to Brandywine.
Yeah. That makes sense, elementary.
Okay. All right, I think that was it, middle elementary, wasn't it?
Let's see. Um, actually, we had the Will's Orchard, which we've talked about, Rogers Road, um, Heritage Manor. Well, same, we've.
Yeah, it's the same area.
Um, just.
Two sixty-two.
Well, it's over, it's, it's south of Calamar, and it's Valley Stream widely.
Yeah, there it is, I see it.
So.
It only has three, three millimetries, three middles?
But it's all part of that whole big area.
It's hard, 'cause it's sandwiched in.
Okay, I got you.
If it's a, if it's a really low number, and they're on the, they're the last subdivision, it's maybe one thing to. It's a little easier, but if they're sandwiched amongst others, and the bus, we literally have to send a bus down there.
You're doubling up a bus route, basically.
And it, and running a pretty empty bus.
Two schools, exactly, okay.
Just guessing, is Gary's school here?
No.
Okay.
And I think the, the other move that we just, we talked about, that we were just leaving alone, was that one from Mashman to Hall Creek, with Cassating Creek and Forsyth Estate, and that was gonna be just left alone until our next.
Until the next round.
Right, when we do the high schools.
Okay.
'Cause that'll shift everything.
So, just leave it as it was in the, in the current draft?
Right. Everything else would be the same as what the staff recommended. I don't think we had anybody speak in those other areas, anyway.
We did Sharon Woods.
Sharon Woods?
Sharon Woods.
Shiloh Woods?
Shiloh.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I wrote the wrong thing at the top, and that's why I'm thinking the wrong number.
Yeah, that's down there with Wallace Run.
Yes, that's exactly right. I just had written the wrong name at the top of these.
All righty.
Shiloh Woods, sorry.
Yeah, that's the, the one that says down low that was back during the heyday and stopped. They're so close to the middle school, so that makes that feeder, they're gonna, all, all brand new schools.
Mm-hmm.
New subdivision, new schools. New community. All righty. Now the fun begins. All right, let me shut my mouth.
Okay, email?
Yep, we're gonna talk about the middle schools, and I think going in order based vote would be the way to go. I think, I don't know, just wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay, ready, ready, the middle?
You got yours pulled up, Tom?
Yep.
I think, um, in talking about. The way that we do the process and that the staff draws up a plan, and then it's our job to review it and go through things, and. One of the concerns we had, that we tried to maintain that consistency of at least moving more than twenty percent. Of students when we have to redistrict and not do a very small percentage. And Nancy is the guru in redistricting, and she picked up right away that there is a smaller percentage leaving Viccree than the other two schools going over to De Santa. So that was why the board made the recommendation to increase, to make the change from the Brookwood area up to the Shiloh area to balance that out. So you don't have that smaller group moving. That was the rationale for making that change. So we heard from everybody from all areas talking either through emails or, um, presentations and stuff. So I think that's the biggest issue that we, we're talking about, trying to balance out the numbers that are transferring to the, to each school to make it more fair. And I think we've talked about, with Cindy making the presentation, that we have to make some kind of decision to move. We cannot leave a school that's not at a functioning level. It wouldn't be fair. And, um, looking at, um, I mean, traffic is an issue, no matter where you are in South Forsythe, and we're gonna have road construction forever and a day. So I, I think that. Those are the issues that I've kinda looked at, so I think that if, if it's agreed with everyone, we'll just go through the process and see what people said and, and see if anything will work.
I will say too, I met with some of the staff yesterday, and they, once they looked at draft two, they were, they're very, they really almost like it better than, than the first one. Because it, of the numbers, exactly what you said.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I think when Nancy made that suggestion, that was that weekend when we were working on this, the staff were already, that Friday before, already drawing that up. They already had that going.
Mm-hmm.
So they had looked twice at it, so.
And it's hard when you're looking at maps and trying to decide who goes where, and it's hard when everybody has been moved a lot. And it's hard because we're all compacted right in one area, which has caused the traffic and caused us, caused the schools to be overcrowded. But in every area, every time we've done this, um, the Bethelview Corridor was another example. When we did that years ago, it was, Tom will remember that. It was horrible, cause we'd, they'd gone to Central and then they got moved to West, and they got, moved back to Central, and they were not happy, and trying to open Whitlow, and it was back and forth. And you try not to flip people back and forth, but the way things are changing, it's just very hard for us to sit here and make that decision and say that's the way it's gonna be from now on. And I think the other thing that we've always worried about, and we're trying to get there, but I don't think we can ever control, completely get there, is to have that one-on-one feeder pattern. You're gonna have that with Brandywine, De Santa, and Denmark, and you'll have that with Central and Otwell and Co., North, North, and North, North, North and Co., Mountain. But in this area, it, we're trying to limit that, and as I said, Viccree has been the one that's been hit the most. And hopefully, in the next time around, we can work on that and see if we can just make it two instead of three splits. But we're faced with having to make the most of our school buildings and make it as equitable as possible. And we're very fortunate that we've got great schools everywhere, and the new ones that'll open will have super principals, and they'll be fine. But having all said that, let's do our due diligence and talk this through.
We'll come back to, I'd like to put some thoughts out there, but we can do it after we work through all the logistics.
Okay.
You know, we never did talk about, and I don't know if we've talked about this enough in the public meetings. When the staff went back and looked a second time, when he looked at the Drew Campground, basically looked at, here's the school and drew a picture. We came back, it's come up several times, and I don't know if we've. I think we've heard it enough that we've kinda got it, but the reasoning behind why Bethelview Downs, um, if I get the three names right, Georgetown, um. The three, uh, three of the subdivisions, I think we understand, having gone through it several times ourselves. Does everybody understand and comfortable with that now? Pinnacle, Pinnacle, Georgetown, Woodfield.
Mm-hmm.
Why they're not an alternative. It seems logical.
I should go through that again, cause people might not know.
Mr. Purple, can we put you on the spot for that one to just kinda highlight that area one more time? Why Bethelview Downs. Whitfield, Pinnacle Glen. I think I actually have some of those here, if you.
That's a feeder pattern, isn't it? It would be the only one from Shiloh.
I got it.
It's the only area that would go to Shiloh, right?
The area you're talking about is on Route forty-one Bethelview as it crosses four hundred north. And that's the area with Bethelview Downs, and then as you go down Highway nine, you got Georgetown, Pinnacle Glen, which is a condominium-type development down that end. And, uh, stops kinda right there at that little Lakes RV area.
Mm-hmm.
So it's kinda that little pocket that's right across four hundred from the Shiloh, Pine Grove.
And I know that the last time, the reason they ended up there was because Whitlow was gonna be so crowded, and Viccree was gonna be so crowded. And we, we had to make that shift to Shiloh because they were, they were all just packed. I, I believe that's what, because I remember trying to figure out who was gonna go.
Yeah, and again, it was always very funny as we came down the Highway nine Bethelview from the north side, and it's almost creates a little wedge there on the Shiloh, uh, boundary.
Right.
And of course, we got everything that's just across Highway nine that's bordered by Ha- Highway nine and four hundred on that north strip across from. They call it the Liberty, I'm trying to remember that subdivision that's up there near the.
Yeah, I know exactly where you're talking about.
Marketplace, that liquid water, that whole little strip up through there.
Right.
So Bethelview Downs can't go to Otwell at this time because they are quite overcapacity with no imminent relief. Um, and leaving them there and taking the other three subdivisions leaves them as a, is that too small of a?
It's a little point that almost just kinda hangs on the other side of four hundred.
And it's not just looks at, it leaves way too small a feeder pattern.
Yeah.
Cause it would be the, it would be the only non-Shiloh.
Right.
Cause when you just look at our colored maps, it looks like that's logical, but then when you think about the feeder patterns, you realize that it makes them too small.
And given the other reason of the three subdivisions not to go with the incoming growth of the Traditions. And possibly Hampton or whatever, that's already been there, but it's, the only other option is put them into Midway and.
Yeah, the Ashford Manor, I believe, is the other new subdivision you were talking about. This upsets the Traditions there.
Yeah, backing up to the barn.
Cause that used to be a large master plan development, and then when that fell through, it became two pieces, which was the now known as Traditions. And the other part was redone as the Ashford Manor.
And that's gone, I mean, that's.
And that's coming out of the ground.
That's coming fast, yeah.
They moved in, yes.
They're rate, by the way.
Excuse me, you've had comments from them in our reports.
Right.
Okay. So that was one we, we pushed you all on that one several times, but it wasn't an option, okay.
I did.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Alrighty. Well, one of ours first was Calamar, which I know we hit that on elementary, but let's look at it at middle again. Way up there.
I'm gonna be putting them back in Viccree Middle, which is packed.
Twenty students, sixty-six homes, we've done this one.
It's the same line up there in that area, both middle and elementary.
And you have to consider that whole area just like Calamar, you have to be, all. All of those subdivisions, we follow into that.
Again, and that would leave a different feeder pattern that doesn't exist.
Exactly.
With, I mean, with that few of students, it would, it's, it goes either way. It's a few enough that you think it could make sense, a few enough that it actually makes it worse, yet it doesn't.
Uh-uh.
Twice the distance, let's see. Now, this is out of, out of order in that Nancy had asked us to look at Rosewood Park. And, um, I'm not sure why. She wasn't sure, and I looked through. The original twelve hundred comments in the input in the second round of six.
Right down here.
Yeah, Joey, did she talk to you about Rose? She brought that up to me today, and she wasn't sure what. I mean, I, they're, they're right there, so I don't know. What the concern was. There was something in the input, and I could not find it in the thousands of lines. If you could just, she wanted that checked down, she just couldn't do it from her shoulder.
Where's the, have, Chris?
It's right, Rosewood is right where McFarland hits nine.
And it looks like it's almost.
I mean.
It's really cursed Brandywine.
I could not find the line in the second round or the first round, so. I don't know. I mean, to me, it would have to be in Brandywine, right, and thus. Makes, I mean, so I don't know what the. So there must have been something in the, one of the first or the second round of the feedback that she was concerned about. Okay. Is it Ringo Bell? I mean, it's, I just, it's not even on the edge, I don't.
I don't know, it's right there.
Then we'll have to check. Maybe it's just like, I mean, it looks like it's a lone subdivision round.
Mm-hmm.
Commercial or something, I don't know. I mean, I know that area.
Maybe she had somebody calling. It stays in Midway, right, but Cindy goes to De Santa.
I wonder if it's a.
Given Park. I mean, that is a very commercial.
I bet it is. You think? Trail park, maybe.
Alright, well, they'll check that for us.
We'll reach out and connect with her and make sure we understand.
She, I think she wasn't sure, I mean, she said there was a comment, and I don't know, it concerns her, I don't know what it was. Alrighty.
You go back to the top of middle? The middle schools, cause we didn't start the first one, right?
Yeah, go back to.
So Shiloh Creek was the first one.
Shiloh, yeah.
Yeah, study area three oh seven.
Nineteen ninety-five development, two months, but they're fifteen years, three-eighths, they say they have three A three middle, all versus now. What's the study area on that one?
Three oh seven.
It's a big study area. That's what I timed out.
Looks like three oh seven A on the map that we're using. Looks like they split it. So I think it's three oh seven B. Let's see. Yeah. It's three oh seven B. And the study area includes a, a large section too that's not in that subdivision, but.
So it's more than just the one?
Yeah, that study area is larger. Includes Shiloh Creek, Shiloh Battle, and then some undeveloped area below Shiloh Glen, or Glen at Shiloh.
Oh, there it is, I already hit it up right there. What's the number again?
Three oh seven B.
Yeah, it's a decent. For next year, it's. Eighteen, well, about twenty.
Houses coming in there, okay.
It looks like they were at Midway, elementary-wise, went to Shiloh when it opened. So Midway, Viccree, Middle, and then opened Shiloh and Pine Grove.
And again, they're off from, across from Maristone, so if Maristone.
Right. They all have to be the same. You can't change that.
Right.
That wouldn't make sense.
That's hard, cause obviously Shiloh and Creek and Maristone are older ones versus the street are newer. I, I get that challenge. Kinda equal distance and travel from the two schools, so.
Mm-hmm, same argument. All the others up and down Shiloh there.
So just leave those at Denmark, I mean, at De Santa.
We need to have a different than D.
D, no, I've got it on the map, so that's why I keep looking at Denmark, and it's right there.
Well, and they're obviously, I mean, you're guessing, they're in Denmark, so.
Okay? Anything else we need to look up there, Tom?
No.
Okay.
Bridges, okay, the ridge is next.
The ridge, Stony Point?
Yeah, which was just right off of Stony Point Road.
Okay.
I think we'll now focus on logistics, so we can talk about the community aspects, which I think are valid discussions. We'll talk about that at the end and talk more about the logistics and things now, et cetera.
Sounds good.
So they, they, like those in this area, have been, gone through the process before. Got the numbers on that, Tom?
This is the ridge. Yeah, it looks like they're fairly large. In the numbers I had. Hundred and fifty-three middle schools.
For the ridge?
That's what I found in the data. We've had to subdivide and re-subdivide these things, so it's hard to track it from time to time.
I think there's part of.
What's the study area for them?
Is it three thirteen D?
Three fifteen B.
Three thirteen? That's one of them, but then D, but just, it's just the ridge?
Yeah, that's just the ridge.
There we go. I get parole ups like seventeen, like twenty.
The summit at Shiloh. Stony Point.
Well, the summit's the new one that opens out on the other road. The newer year, it's, that has homes that have closed up to back to like January of two thousand fourteen up to still coming in, but it's getting close to being done.
Yeah, it's three forty.
Four B.
Yeah, that's B.
But that includes, and that took me a while to get that, that, there are three forty-four B crosses over across the street. And I think that one includes Stone View also. Which is not easy to tell when you first look at this. And that one is.
Yeah, three forty-four B looks like the undeveloped, or the one coming up, it's in the corner. So it looks like three thirteen D. Stony Ridge. Three thirteen D. It's like.
Fine, so you have the, the new one.
This is Stony Point, comes all the way through here. And this is the new one on the corner. And this is the new one on the corner.
The summit include, the summit includes Stone View, that's one that crosses over on our studies. So the summit is three forty-four B, which includes Stone View, and then three thirteen D is only.
This new is three forty-four, and this three thirteen goes all the way through here.
If you look at the logistics, like Shallow Road is a potential, this three forty-three A, which is nothing right now, that's where that proposed two hundred and eighty-six subdivision has gone in now, in the last two weeks, or in for zoning, which opens across the street from three forty-four B, which is. It's just, well, it's just homes, it's not even an MPD, it's just homes. Res four. That would, I mean, that has to, that's part of those, that's, like, when they talk about the forty-five hundred numbers, that's, this is another one that just came in past all that. This is hot off the press kind of a thing.
So this will be going into, um, Santa.
This, that, the new, that new one has to go into DeSana, absolutely. But we're in October, that'll probably wrap up zoning in six months, and then go from there, roughly.
That's part of the Big Creek to DeSana feeder. All down through there. And just the question is how much, you know, creating a feeder from, if you had Shallow, you have to change both elementary and middle. And only do we have a, do we have a feeder for, how big is it? From Shallow to DeSana? I think they're all piney up there.
I know. Big Creek. Wasn't the number that I had you look up from the, the Shallow Farms area, the fifth graders in Big Creek that would be going to DeSana, was sixty-four? Sixty-four is how many's enrolled in Big Creek, is that what you're asking?
Well, it's, yeah, how big it is, I was trying to compare the patterns here.
I'd read somewhere, somebody told me it was thirty, but it's actually, there's sixty-four kids enrolled, and that, so that's,
Yeah.
that's not a small number.
Mm-hmm, because I showed they have three hundred and seventy-one elementary total.
How many?
I showed three seventy-one, but it may be part of that bigger area that's at Shallow too. Couldn't quite tell the way they split it up in some of the stuff I had. But it seemed large up in that area. Elementary heavy.
Well, we just don't ever relate, you know, ten kids coming out of fifth grade going to.
Right. That's what I was trying to assess, is the feeders into there. So DeSana has Brandywine, Midway, and Big Creek.
Right.
Feeders.
So I think, I read in one of the notes, it says if not moving the Shallow was, that, that would leave according to the staff of nine percent feeder pattern from Big Creek to DeSana.
Yeah, so you'd have to go.
I'm sorry, say that again, Kristen.
They had a note in here, moving the, not, basically, not moving, the draft, not moving Shallow over would leave a nine percent feeder pattern from Big Creek to DeSana.
Would you put it below the threshold that we gave them?
And what is it with moving them?
Do you have that there?
It's twenty-something percent.
So that's over what we? Um, I think twenty-two? Why, that's two south. Thirty, let's see. Thirty-six maybe? If I'm reading this right?
Yeah, they were the three numbers from where they're balanced out.
I think thirty-six.
Forty-two, thirty-six, and twenty-two. Forty-two to Santa, thirty-six to Piney Grove, and twenty-two to South.
Yeah, and the only other way would be to take the whole Big Creek feeder pattern out.
And then where would you put them?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's the only other alternative.
Right, which will, hopefully, we can do next time around, but we just don't know with all the subdivisions being built out, how it's gonna play out. This new one that you're talking about, Kristen, will go to Brandywine, right? That's what I'm looking at on the map.
It's, it ha, I mean, when it's, as we have a draw-in now, yes, and it has to, I mean, I do think there is, if something new pops up on the edge like that, something that large, I think the staff have been given that leeway, if something new comes out of the ground to say, hey, this has to shift this way.
Right.
In between redistricting, so I think they have that.
Yeah, that would have to go to.
It has to.
Brandywine and DeSana.
That's where it's set up now.
We had asked, I, I know I had, and I think, I think actually somebody also had emailed to ask the staff to just, was it enough to say, you know, keeping the Shallow Woods, keeping all those, and then taking the summit, taking those numbers and the, actually, anything, so one of the suggestions was keeping Stony and Shallow East, those subdivisions in, and then just doing the Shallow. And that was some of the numbers that I was working on with Mr. Purple and Mr. Carlisle, and the summit's numbers, I was surprised how low they actually were when you subtracted out um, across the street that is combined, and it was only, can't remember, top of my head, it was like eighteen or some, I was surprised how low it was.
So it wouldn't make any difference?
I think it's a logical thing to look at, but, um, just given, that way, everything in Shallow would go over there, I mean, it's just a logical dividing point, because that new subdivision will, I would think, has to open up right across the street from there, so they'll, you know, it makes sense for those two to go together. But it's not a, it doesn't balance out. Just moving that.
Right, and Tim, when you were figuring these numbers up, all that, did it include something like these subdivisions that, with that rate of growth? Does it make any sense, but we talked about these numbers, and the projections that were to fill up these schools were based on the growth in these subdivisions, like the one we're talking about coming in, but you did, the rate of growth, you included that increase.
Because like I said, with our averaging now, over the last several years with Piney Grove, we've used that eight point four percent to spread out across these areas. And then we've gone back and compared the eight point four to do a balancing of ten percent to the south end, and six percent to the north end, five percent to the north end, and so we, we try to look at some of those things of, how would that eight percent balance out between the north and south areas, as we've discussed that.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that even if, you know, you'd say, well, we could leave this, because all of this growth is gonna take place in the next year or two, it'd catch up, but we can't do that, because we don't.
I think, I, I got an email sometime for some questions I asked, that said, if we opened DeSana with eight hundred and seven students, and you figure an eight four, point four percent growth, we will not be over capacity till twenty nineteen. So we could guarantee that no sixth grader that starts in DeSana was, was gonna be moved to another middle school during their sixth, seventh, or eighth grade year, pretty much, unless.
Well, one, I, I think the eight percent is probably pretty low, I mean, even if you look at the Piney, that one number was eight point nine in two thousand and eleven, I think it was, it went down to six point something, but then the next year went right back up to eleven point eight. And, uh, so I think the growth will be higher than that. Um, but to your point about, like, kind of promising we won't move them back, I think that when it comes to redistricting, I think it would be helpful if we had some kind of a, I want to say a policy, but a guideline, we try to not redistrict X number of times. But in the same token, for these people, I wouldn't want to guess now what their opinion would be if they're moved now, and they got to the point in a couple of years where it was crowded. I don't know what their opinion would be, they may still want to go back to Piney versus stay, so to promise they wouldn't, when in fact, they may actually still want to, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't know what their, so I wouldn't want to say, we'll do this, we're not gonna move you, which normally would make sense, but in this odd case, I would say we wouldn't want to.
Don't do that.
I wouldn't want to make that commitment, because I don't know what they'd want to do, I don't know what I would want to do if I was in that situation.
Well, you've got, Piney's gonna be crowded too, it's not gonna be DeSana only, all, with all these subdivisions, they're still gonna be picking up students. If you look at the numbers that are projected, Piney's gonna be overcrowded again too.
Well.
Gosh, and it probably won't be relieved until we are able to build another school on the other side of Vicry, and move those kids to the west more than.
That's right, Piney Grove peaked out at, in two thousand and ten with eleven point nine percent, and that's the most we've ever had at any school, right?
Yeah, that's, well, for Piney Grove and their record, we had the high growth down in the south, at South Middle, Riverwatch, those times, they were in the eleven, twelve percent ranges.
And then, but they went down one year, and then went right back, they went eleven point nine, six point something, and then eleven point eights, there's really no difference between eleven point nine and eleven point eight, so they went right back up. And then they were in the eights, I think it was, so. I think there's more potential for growth in this new southwest quadrant than there was at the time over in that Piney area. Just, well, one, be given there's more landmass that's open, and two, given that there's all those zonings that are already done. So I think, I mean, the forty-five hundred number is zonings and things in the works, and they will take time. And I could go on in this, I, I do think this, I, I think, to talk about the growth in general, I think that this is, as I call it, the perfect storm. Here we are, many areas zoned, not just zoned, but they're zoned, in many cases, high density, which, whether it's apartments, or it's, say, res four, it's concentrated, it's a lot easier for the mass production builders to put them up faster when they're that close, because they're, they're building the same house with the same roof on a small piece of property, so they tend to go up faster, which is kind of what happened with Brookwood in Big Creek this year, with the subdivision across from Brookwood, around the, the Caney Estates, and the subdivision by Walmart there, old zoning, the new zoning, but when you're building forty houses on twenty-some odd acres, actually less, they can just do it fast.
Three or four months, yeah.
So I think, I think the growth pat, I mean, I think it's probably gonna somewhere with all, I think Mr. Emerson does great forecasts, but I think it's probably gonna be somewhere between higher than it was in the past, but, you know, not all forty-five hundred are gonna be done next year. And the same token, again, this southwest Forsyth, this is Forsyth County Schools, it's a builder's dream, we're building three brand-new schools, elementary, middle, and high in our, our county, and they're building subdivision, doesn't get any better than that, so I, you can't, this is a seller's dream. So I, I do think there's valid points that the, the growth is gonna come, I, I.
The relief is gonna come from the west, not to the east. Because we can't, it's so already compact in the east that the, it's gonna have to come from the west, Vicry, and that way, to relieve DeSana. Because if Piney is just about built out in that area, it's gonna grow some more, you see what I'm saying, Kristen, most of the southeastern is just about.
Well, you know, it is and it isn't, um, there is a new zoning win by Creekstone, the avenues is trying to get their three hundred and fifteen apartments there. I think the other thing that we don't know, we just don't have data on yet, is these new Avalon-type developments, I mean, the ones coming over here aren't quite that level, but they're mixed use, and I, we just don't have comparable data to say, if you have this lifestyle environment that are higher-end, potentially, we don't know what kind of families are gonna be in there, so it's really hard.
In some of the areas, we've already talked with Brian, and the mobility factor goes up tremendously, and we haven't had to deal with that yet. So we're not sure exactly how that looks and how to plan for it.
You mean, they'll come and go?
I mean, they won't, we won't have hard numbers, the numbers ebb and flow. In terms of mobility, it's, it's just, numbers change a lot more frequently, so it's hard to plan, you have to almost average it out, and then put that plan in place.
But if you look at the map, logistically, what I'm saying is, we're not gonna be building another middle school right in the south Forsyth.
No, we're done.
In the foreseeable future, yeah.
No.
So the next one will be over on the other side of Vicry, out of that way, going west, so that's why I'm saying the relief is gonna come from the west.
Well, that's kind of what's gotten us in the pickle, back in the, I think it was the two thousand and seven map, back when the Brookwood was being done, that was where that next middle school was supposed to go, and they're just, the land didn't work out. Had that worked out, that would have been the right location to relieve both South Middle and Piney. And to me, the biggest frustration, and this is why I feel for the Stony Shallow people, is that's their world, that's their community, and it's not about crossing four hundred, it's just one forty-one is where we live, Sharon Springs is where we play sports, that's our world, there is nothing over on the McFarland area yet, it's just, it's, it's not just a physical barrier, it's just not the community, so that's where I really, I think they would like to stand on, and that's why I feel frustrated for them, because they, they had to leave Shallow, I'm sorry, South Middle to create Piney, and they did that. But if we opened up a new school right now in the, in that area, they still wouldn't be happy about moving, but I think it would be a lot easier pill to swallow that it would still be their community. And I think that's, to me, everything else aside, logistics and all that, that's the biggest argument that I'm frustrated with and sad about. That's why, I mean, I, I know we're looking at the numbers, and it's a hard decision, but if I had my choice, we all would, they would stay there, we would spend the extra money that takes the staff the first year, and roll it over, and by the second year, year and a half from now, I think the development would take care of it. But it's tough, because when I hear Dr. Salom talk about that staffing.
Well, and, and if you open a school with six hundred kids, and they're playing sports, I know y'all always say I'm about sports, but.
No, it's part of the community.
It is part of the, it's when middle school starts, and they're playing against a school that's got twelve hundred, that's double.
A lot central.
And so you're almost setting them up to fail, and I, I, you know, that's not fair to the kids that are in DeSana, to me. And you're setting them up to fail, I mean, not to have all the, the kids that will be at DeSana won't have all of the advantages that all the other middle schools have for,
Not for a while.
for two or three years.
No, that's right. Just don't see how we can do that.
I mean, I just don't see how you can not move anybody, especially, and I know what you're saying, that the numbers, but, you know, Tim's always been pretty good on the numbers. And, and according to the numbers that I'm looking at, you know, it's three years out, well, that is almost, in staffing, I think, if, if, you know, what I talked to him about, that would be almost a million dollars that we would have to put in. And I, I just feel like that, I mean, I'll just say it, we, when we went for the bond, we went to our voters, our people, and we said, we have people from, our schools are overcrowded, we've got to do something to relieve these schools. And now we've built the schools, they passed the bond, we built the schools, and now we're gonna open it at sixty percent? If we have to go back for another bond, which we will, before, you know, and then we go back, and we say the same thing, and they're like, well, I don't, you know, you just opened it at sixty percent. So how can you say you're overcrow, I mean, I just don't feel like that opening at sixty percent is not what we told our constituents we would do, and it's not what, when we went out and were honest with people about, I mean, we're talking about the bond, that's not what we, we portrayed.
I hear what you're saying, but I still think, I, I do think, because Mr. Emerson, I mean, I think he got Lambert last year to within three students, which is mind-boggling, because that's one set of twins and another kid, so the fact that he can do that is amazing, but in the same token, we just, like, and not only is this the perfect storm, but we still have the old growth, I'm sorry, the old zonings and the new zonings, and that's what happened with, Big Creek and Brookwood's numbers were significantly high this year than expected.
How many new zonings have they had in District Two this year?
District Two, they've had some senior ones, but this is more District, well, this is the western side, so it gets into more District Three. So that McFarland there, when you get to the side, when you pass four hundred, that's three. So. The far end, another thing is, people think it's already built out, well, just because there's something there doesn't mean it's built out, there's still, there's still a lot more over there that people just don't realize, there really is.
And I, you know, the traffic is horrible, I rode down there this week during the times, just to see, and I don't, I don't envy anybody, I, I did the, you're, the Caney Creek area too, I mean, it's, it's all terrible. You know, it really is, I, I don't know what to say about that, except it's all terrible. But we, we can't build roads to. So I guess we, we need to get what information we've asked the staff for, and is there any other areas that we want to discuss or talk about?
Well, other than, um, that was the main one, I think that was. Well, other than, um, that was the main one. I think that was everybody. Then there was the area across from the Windhaven area, they asked to stay. That's across from the area in Brookwood, it's down there across the rim.
That's, yeah, that one.
What was the name again, Anne? I didn't hear.
Windhaven, Windhaven and, um, Neymar.
Okay, yeah, on Old Alpharetta.
They were claiming to be about, the Bram, the one has, I think, three, three, zero, or three, three, one for six, seven, eight. Or anyone's the older subdivision.
Yeah, it's kinda the other half of what we just talked about, Old Alpharetta, Big Creek to Brin, to, um, to Sana. It's all a part of that edge.
So that's the only. Could you guys look at the nu- the roll-up numbers for those for next time? For a study area?
Windhaven.
Three forty-five.
It's a combination, cause it's a small one, the other. Three forty-five and seventy-six.
Yeah.
I don't know, I've just, I've gotta just make a few more points. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to listen to me on these. The other, the thing I'm struggling with again, I keep looking, I I'm just doing it, Anne, going back to strategic plan and going back to when we were interviewing, um, for superintendent, Anne, looking at the last round of strategic planning. I actually looked back at, we did the the surveys and the stakeholder inputs, and I was reading what people liked and what they wanted. And I just took some notes out of what the cabinet was saying, and this is the part that's pulling at me. Continue to maintain a small town feel with the things we we do, even though we are becoming a larger system. We want to have understanding of how we are still growing, but we must keep the community feel. This is important to what sets us apart. Our community support is what has gotten us where we are. The new leadership can't ignore that. It's more than one-third of their job. We need to foster that. And that's, again, where I struggle. The, these are the people that created Piney, and they've done their, they've done their time, so to speak, in my mind, and, uh, it's a different community. I guess I can't, that's the big thing I struggle with. I want, is it worth funding it for a year to do what we need to do and reevaluate? I hate to go through this again next year, believe me. I think everybody would, but is it worth floating it for one year? We talked about this on our retreat, was if we were gonna shift and the numbers didn't work out, do we need to look at the funding, and do we need to step up? And, uh, I still think that's something we need to look at or consider.
And I don't disagree with you. I think that's what we've all struggled with, and because we've all been there and worked and built a community. And it is the crutch of our school system, and I I can understand that, but the numbers are the numbers, and that's, I think we all need to, like you say, Chris, to talk about this and think about it hard, because it is, that is the crutch of the whole thing.
Yeah, I think a lot of the feedback we've heard from is all around the edge of the the areas where it's moving back and forth. And so we'll investigate them. That's what we're doing now, is we look at the areas, we get the comments, and then we get the online feedback. And then we've taken and looking at the the maps and the zones that we have, picking out those areas and say, is there any other options in that area to trade off, you know, to keep the numbers? And that's really the only thing we can do and still successfully open schools.
And I don't disagree either. In one, I mean, one year, maybe we can sit down and look at these numbers that we have, but according to this, it would be three years.
Well, I, with all due respect, I just think that's, that's below what numbers have been in the past, and I truly think these numbers, again, I'm
Well, I mean, maybe we could sit down and look at them. You know, but like you say, he was twins and one off at Lambert. I mean, even though people are moving in, what I'm saying is they're not all gonna be middle school kids, you know, is there gonna be?
No, but if you run the, I mean, if you take the number, it's forty-five hundred homes, and let's say they weren't really, even you take.
I don't think they're gonna build forty-five hundred homes down there in a year.
No, they're not gonna build them in a year, but if you take the percentage, I think it's point. The middle school, actually, when you proj- when you do the projections, is actually the lowest number of students. It makes sense. You've got six, three, and four. So the number's multiplied by point one eight something or other, I think it is. Okay, so if you take, you know, for a total of point seven four two per per single household coming in, so if you take the forty-five hundred, that even for for middle school, that brings in eight hundred and twenty-three. And even if you just assume that they only built thirty-five hundred of those in the next year, there's still six hundred and forty students for middle school. And those are big numbers. Those are really big numbers. Uh, and that's, and even if you assume half of that, and that's less than, I mean, that's points, like I said, point one eight three. So. Again, it's hard, though. Some of those apartments, I think, are obviously gonna have some families. Some of them are two and three. The Roca Point project.
It's supposed to be seniors, right?
Hundred and fifty at Roca Point are plus. Their numbers keep changing, but their total number remains the same. But there aren't that, of all of those four hundred, four thousand five hundred, there are very few senior in there. Again, it's just, it's a mix, a bunch of mixed use, some of them. Not, a lot of them are just regular subdivisions. I I think regular subdivisions are gonna have, you know, two point five kids eventually, one way or the other.
So even if you had two hundred, and I would say if you take out the seniors, you're down to a hundred and fifty. How many middle schools possibly moving in that first year, and we don't move anything, we're starting out with six hundred and seven students.
I just, and I know that other groups have mentioned these, but I can just, okay, Bridge Hampton on Mullenex, a hundred and fifty houses, hundred, hundred townhomes. Black Mail Manor on Mullenex, seventy-five homes. Deerfield, that's the other. Deerfield is the the nice higher end one off of By Strickland there. That's two hundred and eighty-three s- single families, which are coming out of the ground, and seven hundred apartments. I've seen that product. I went down with a developer a couple of years ago when they redid that. That's, I gotta say, that seven hundred apartments, I can see that being carried more towards non-family, just because of this. I've seen the product, and I would not have believed it if I had not gone and seen it. Tid Wells, forty-five, that's not a big one. The venue apartments, four hundred apartments, I think that could be family friendly. Roca Point is ninety-two homes, hundred and sixty-eight townhomes, four hundred and thirty apartments, of which one fifty are senior. Um, but keep in mind, senior does not mean not children. I've got other data files I could show you. Many senior products like, um, I don't know what's the one I like the best. Orchards tends to be zero to none. Then we've got one down on Johns Creek Parkway that's a gated, active, senior community that only allows ten percent of the units to have children, and there's fourteen students. So it's, it's really, it can be all over the place. Toddman Someday, eight hundred and seventy-five. Woodbury Preserve, ninety-seven. Piper and Ready to Go, Waterbrook, two hundred and twenty-two, they expect to be done in two thousand and sixteen. Traditions, four hundred and growing. Ashford Manor, a hundred and twenty-four ho- houses. Shiloh Point, forty-five homes. The new Shiloh one on that curve, two hundred and eighty-six, single families. The Glen at Shiloh, forty-one. Walton Bluegrass, that's a hundred senior, three hundred apartments. I, but that, that one's kinda gone all over the place. So I don't know how that's gonna pipe out. And the Taylor Morrison is fifty-five, um, MPD, which is commercial and home, so. And I actually know of another that's not in, that's gonna be in this area, is three hundred homes. It's not yet in the works, so. It's just, I think this is an an anomaly that we have not experienced before, not just in quantity, but again, some of the quality of the developments, I don't know, anybody knows, in reality, how many students will be in that type of product. Single family, I think we can better guess. Well.
And to the commercials, I mean, looking at Highway Nine through this district that we're working in, has proven to be different. A lot of it's commercial. You know, there's a lot of white area and single little streets going back. I'm not sure
Yeah, my white one's mainly commercial.
Which one of these off, well, there's a lot of white area all the way through Highway Nine here in the southern.
White meaning commercial, the yellow is subdivisions.
Yeah, so they're just not, they're not subdivisions yet. Um, there's places where subdivisions could fit, back behind it, and and maybe high density as well. Um, so that's gonna grow. It's hard to guess at that right now. That's where we're gonna have to wait and see how the growth plays out. We've always talked about, you know, this district over here having a lot of leftover from two thousand and eight at least. A lot of, um, stubbed in ready subdivisions that are gonna fly up, and that's gonna be up in Vicrye's area.
Well, that's your Shiloh Woods, that kinda thing. I don't think we can, we can only look at the growth that's within reason. I mean, the forty-five hundred, we know.
That we kinda know.
To go beyond that, it would be true throughout the county. If you see a green, when you say white, I see green, A one, if it's A one here, A one in north, it's a side. We have, we can't, we can't, because, you know, we can't even look at that, cause anything that's commercial right now tends to flip residential, so.
You could.
Zoned or not zoned, you can't, can't tell. So we have to go with what we, the forty-five hundred are more imminent, one, because they're done, and unlike two thousand and ten, eight, six, in the foreseeable future, the economy looks good. It could change next year, but it doesn't seem like it's going that way. All right, I think I've.
I think that's most of everything.
I think that's most of my points, so.
We still are up in the air about Hamptons, but I.
Yeah. We'll have to kinda work on those fringe areas that we see and see if there's a trade-off, and that's what we've gotta work hard with staff. I think from my, from our discussions tonight, that's what I take away, is that those areas in particular along the edges of both elementary and middle school, and keep in mind the future. I mean, we all try to somewhat not deal with that right now, cause we don't know where we'll be when that occurs. So we can't plan for that now. We have to deal with it, yeah.
We've got to deal with it now and next year.
And and I would add to Doll's point. If you open the school, uh, with eight hundred some odd students, eight hundred and seven is what we have for draft two, even at twelve percent growth for three years in a row, which we've never seen, that would be unprecedented.
Even in two thousand. Well, we've seen eleven point nine, eleven point.
I know, but for, I'm talking three years in a row. Three consecutive years at twelve percent growth, you're still not at capacity at that new middle school. You're still under capacity, and that's twelve percent, which is, for three years in a row, which would be unprecedented. It may happen, but it'd be unprecedented.
Under capacity or under a good threshold?
Under capacity.
Well, with all due respect, I mean, Brookwood is still not at capacity, and it's been open since two thousand and nine, and it is a number one, number two rated school, so capacity number versus good staffing is not necessarily one and the same. Brookwood's actually at the point now that they've got enough to have the full, the second counselors and the second APs. That's, that's almost in a, obviously, the fuller you are of capacity, or actually even slightly over, we've learned, is actually a little better than being at, say, seventy-five or eighty percent. That's, that's where it's really challenging, cause you've got the kids, but you don't get the allot, and so the more full, the better, to your, I guess I'm speaking to your point on that one. But, um, the capacity number's not the same as fully staffed.
I guess the most that Forsyth County grew was in two thousand and seven, I think. We had like twenty-nine hundred homes closed, I think I've heard that stat somewhere, over the whole county. So maybe we could even go back and look at that year.
Two thousand and seven for percentage?
Yeah, cause I think I only have back to like eleven and ten and eleven. And, I mean, that was when everything was really booming, and I don't believe the economy's back to what it was then. I mean, I agree that I don't, I'm hoping there's not another downturn like we had, but, um, I think we could, you know, that might be something we could.
Might look at. I think we're also, here we are in two thousand and fifteen. Forsyth County is, was good then, but it has continued to excel, and I think our draw is even bigger and better now than it was then.
Well, it's a different problem now, because we're all crowded and we're talking about one little small area. We're not talking about spreading it out across the whole southeastern. It's just that one pocket. This is a very difficult decision.
Yeah.
Yes, and how crowded is Piney gonna be in three years if we didn't do anything, you know?
Well, that's, that's the challenge, like that, the apartments of the avenue, the collections, excuse me.
Right.
We don't know, we don't know what, I mean, they're trying to limit it to two apartments, two, excuse me, bedrooms, but that could still cater to, you know, single family moms or dads, so we just don't know what those are gonna be. That, I'm not saying pro or con, I'm just saying we just don't know. It's a new world on that stuff.
And the, and the board members know this. When, you know, when I was hired as superintendent in Fayette County, that was a community that was booming at that time, and then the econ- economy tanked. And when I walked into that superintendentcy, we had five thousand empty seats in that school system. And, you know, they built in anticipation of growth, and then the growth didn't happen, and then they had a major problem on their hands. No one's suggesting that that would happen here, but it's one of the reasons the state won't approve funding for a new school until you actually have the the children in your community, so that you can make your case. That's right, and and that, and that's what causes us to kinda lag behind a little bit. And sometimes people in the community don't understand, well, why aren't you anticipating? Because you can't get approval until you actually have the numbers here to make the case.
And then it takes another eighteen months to do.
To get approved, right.
And it works for some counties, because they're not growing as much and as quickly as we are, but as quickly as we, and and they even, what was the thing called, the funding we got that was?
The exceptional growth. Well, I think that's one of the things we're gonna re-talk to our state delegates about, the exceptional growth funding. And we also are looking to try to get some more flexibility on our funding from the state that if we feel that we, our, your numbers are justified in a certain quadrant, that they should give us the flexibility on funding, just like they do with staffing. I mean, and that's, that's something that we have talked to our delegation about, and we'll continue to work with.
I agree with that for sure.
And too, it's, it's part of the, our model. Um, growing up in DeKalb County, we had much of a, a high school, I mean, a elementary school in particular, community model, community meaning subdivision. Almost every subdivision, or a lot of subdivisions, had their own elementary school. And I've, I've gone back down there since then, this is forty years ago, and that community has to bust kids into that community, cause it's an older community now. And so I like our model in that it takes multiple subdivisions, if you would, to build that community in the schools the size we build them. They're not the Gwinetts, the the larger, where you have to pull half the county over to it. It's a, a medium-sized, good number, and we found success in that. I think this area is just a very volatile area right now, and it's a hard one to build a school, but we have to do it. It's a need there, and we've known it for years. In fact, we, like I think we've already said, we've come back to this area. We had looked up north, thinking that's where we needed to be, and we came back down here to, to do this a number of years ago. Uh, we had to have some relief here, it was gonna happen. And it just, because of the recession, I think, we were hoping it would've built out more since we started talking about this area. Still not quite there, but I think we're closer than we were. So it's, it's tough, and it's building a new community and opening the new high schools, as we've experienced with both Lambert and West. You have to take this community and you have to create it around, a lot of times, the high school, which are fed from Mill, which are fed from elementary. And so we've experienced the change in growth in the county. I I moved to Brookwood Road in nineteen ninety-five. It was a different place than it is now. And same thing with these areas. These are much, those areas, the same thing's happening and occurring with them. And with the Highway Nine component in the middle of this district, you have a little bit of commercial, light commercial through there, which you're dealing with in a state road. So it's, it's a little bit different mix than we've had in the past, but it's something that we need to do.
So we'll get the numbers that we've asked for, look at all those things.
Yeah, look at those edgy areas.
Yeah, and just, um, I know it's a work session, but for the sake of the audience, what happens now is November twelfth, the final draft will be uh, submitted to the board for consideration, and the actual vote on the final draft will take place on November nineteenth. So we still have some work to do between now and then to finalize.
And we appreciate all the emails, but we really have all the information we can handle right now, so please.
I do wanna say, like, I, about Wednesday of last week, I finally had an epiphany that I just, not that I was up to Wednesday's emails, but I cannot, I tried to respond sequentially to them, and I, on Wednesday, I'm like, I'm never gonna be able to do it. I wasn't finished doing the first round, and so if I haven't responded to you, it's not that I haven't wanted to, but last week they were coming in literally at the rate of one every three minutes, and, um, honestly, I wouldn't wanna respond.
They may have taken out trophies.
I wouldn't wanna respond half-heartedly, so if you don't get a response, it's, not that I didn't read it, I just, I literally read through the four points each per, but the beautiful thing is, I wanna give y'all the credit. Unlike other things I've seen go through here with the county, y'all didn't cut and paste and say the same thing. And I'm telling you, what's good about that is, we read every one, because when someone's, just cuts and paste what someone tells them to email, it just doesn't have the same, it comes in quantity, but it doesn't come in from the heart, so. It takes us longer to read each one individually, but I would rather do that and get the true thoughts from that person than have it, here's what you need to tell them, I I would rather hear, so. Takes longer, but it's, it, it's the right. than have it, here's what you need to tell them, I, I would rather hear. So it takes longer, but it's, it's the right way.
And one thing we don't lack is passion.
No.
Is that all of it? Are we good? Okay. Next, we have on our agenda executive session, but I don't think that we need that tonight. So.
Are we okay with that?
We are okay with that.
Okay.
And so, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kristen and a second by Anne. All in favor?
Unanimous.